You can.
You can.
No, thank you.
All right, I've started the recording and we are all set, Ken, whenever you're ready.
Okay, sounds good. It is seven P M. Let me just click that off there. Got it? Great. It's seven P M. I'll call our meeting to order for tonight. What is it? Twenty ninth of September? Oh, shoot. Okay, and um, then let's start with the roll call.
Sure. We have Randy Bruce. Here, Dean Grosskopf.
Here.
Cynthia Kennedy.
Here.
Herb Paulson.
Here.
Ken Sepsma here. And one city of Middleton position is vacant. But it's my understanding that the mayor is prepared to nominate our new plan commission member who was also on the call tonight, Gretchen. Erdman Hermans is her name. And so she's not a voting member at this meeting, but if the council confirms her appointment next week, then she will be at future meetings as a voting member. So, welcome to Gretchen.
Well. All right.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's no public hearing tonight. I should have taken that off the agenda. Sorry about that.
Great, good. Okay, um, not that we don't like to hear from public, but we don't have one. We don't do that tonight. Um, next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes, and that would be to approve the minutes of or to consider approval of the minutes of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty one.
I will move approval.
I will second.
A motion made, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the August eighteenth minutes. Any discussion on that? Motion, any corrections, additions, deletions?
Who made the motion?
What's that?
Who made the motion?
I I did.
You did.
Dean.
Dean.
I'm hearing no other discussion than all favor of the motion to approve the minutes. Say aye.
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 Post a name. Minutes are approved. And next item is our actual agenda items tonight. The first one is the initial consult, Jordan Meyer Concept Plan for the Wagenke property. The East of County Highway Q and south of Briggs Road. Who wants to kick this off for us? Is it you, Mr. Wilson?
I would be happy to, because then we can let Mark do the next one.
Yeah, I figured it would probably work out okay.
Yeah, so with respect to this, Marcus pulling up the information. Mister Mister Meyer has purchased what we've been calling for many years with the Wagenke property and it's located there. It's an access road off of County Truck Highway Q. Just south of Briggs Road and just north of of the city. You know, but well, that part of that part of the city. That part of the city's development there. And to the west of this is the city. And to the east of this is part of the Bishop's Bay Golf Course. It's the area between two nines. It's a heavily wooded parcel that has an access road. And there's they're proposing four single family lots. On the back four acres of this site, there's about two acres that go in. This was approved previously for a C U P on that back parcel for an entryway with four smaller condominium units that were somewhat clustered together with the idea of preserving trees and taking the space and having some more open space and with a little bit of turnaround space at the at the corner where the access road goes in and some parking and garage, a small garage area. So that was approved years ago. It it's never gone forward. I think Dr. Wagenki that owned the property. Maybe up until a few years ago, always, I don't know what you call that, Mark, but I say re-up, he renewed the C U P up until, I think, a few years ago.
The S A P.
Yes.
Specific implementation plan so it wouldn't lapse.
Okay, so now what's going on here is that Mr. Meyer would like to divide this with four lots. Little bit different size, two smaller lots at the bottom, one acre, one one acre lot and one by more than acre and a half maybe on the north side. Uh, he has this this private road, which would be just a long driveway to these four with a cul-de-sac that uh, we talked to him about talking to Aaron at the fire department to make sure that that would work for them and also with the uh, garbage truck, but it's here for an initial consult to get your thoughts on this. It's definitely in the extraterritorial zoning area. Like I said, there is a C U P that's on place and it's it on the comprehensive plan. It's in the community residential. Well, for in the town of Westport, it's in the town of Westport and in our plans and community residential. So there might be some expectation of community residential development like is being proposed here and like was approved before. Just so you all know, we have heard, we've heard from almost everyone that lives on Briggs Road. And I think that the Mister Meyer may maybe have met with some of them or all of them. And all of the communications, which Mark had some in the agenda packet indicated that, you know, they they really didn't want to see four single family individual lots. They wanted to preserve as much as the trees. And they would rather see one or two units because they felt that was more consistent with their lots in the Briggs Road neighborhood, which this does about up to. And so that that's kind of where we are. They're they're here to get your comments. And I think Tim Sleeper is here, I think, who's helping helping him out with this. An engineer, Vera Becker. I don't know that. Yeah, and Jordan Meyer is also on the phone, so probably is appropriate now, Ken. Unless you have some particular questions for me to hear from Mister Meyer or maybe Mister Sleeper and see what they would like to tell you about what they're proposing.
Sure, I have one question before we go to the proponents here. Um. I have recollection to this, probably Dean does too, that this was quite a long time ago that Doctor Wagenki came and got the C U P. But it was not a simple matter at that time. I thought that it was, as I recall, somewhat. Um. Um. I don't want to say heated, but it was it was not just, oh, okay, that's fine. Here you can have C U P. You can do this. It was an extended discussion and so forth to get to the point we're at. And what I would I would like to hear at some point is, is what what's the difference? You know, how do we get to that one? And what's the difference between that one and this one? You don't have to answer that right now, but that that's that's one of the concerns I have, because it just, I I do. I mean, it must be twenty years ago that.
It was it was probably fifteen. Yep. And just just to pop on that, I think Jordan Meyer might touch on that because he did present both plans and wanted to show show the difference. It was contentious, Ken. It took a lot of time. There was a there was actually the proposal was for more than that, more like eight units, if I remember, maybe it started with twelve. And then it worked its way down to four, but I think this the site plan. I think Jordan included that in his comments of or his plans that he submitted. So maybe Mark can. If he goes down to the next document or something, might be able to find those to show you. And I think what what you see is just that. If the the plan was put in a a more centralized location. And so that may be part of the different difference here is that it wasn't spread out. It was more unified in the with the buildings in the middle and green space around it. It was somewhat isolated from Briggs Road and also from. I'm sorry, I got North Shore, but that's that's not what that subdivision is. What is that? Shore Crest. Sorry, I got North Shore Bay Drive in my brain today. Sorry, Shore Crest. So that that was really the difference, but it took weeks to get there, meetings, meetings after meetings to get there. And then that was approved and it was many years ago and it was never acted on. For various reasons, I'm sure, but.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for staff before I go ahead and hear from Mr. Sleeper? Et cetera.
I have a quick one, Ken. They're talking about developing this back section. My question is, what other section? Is the rest of it just driveway?
Yeah, that's all the proposal is. Yeah, driveway and stormwater. And you can see it here. It's there's really one, two, three lots.
Okay, three lots, one one property. So there'll be no other development on this parcel. Is that right?
Right. So the lots behind north of Shore Crest and south of those those brick roads, Briggs Road homes would just be stormwater and driveway to get back there. And then
Okay.
You can see the parcel to the to the, well, Mark has it there. That's the parcel.
The way Mark has it up there, I see it now. Okay, thank you.
Great. Anybody else for staff before we go on? Go ahead, Mr. Sleeper or Miss Meyer, who wants to tell us about this?
Yeah, my my name's Tim Sleeper. Thanks for having us tonight. Mister Wilson, pretty much summarized everything we're doing on the development. At one point, indeed, we floated the idea of some condominium homes on the stem part of this property, but in trying to maintain a more representative density with the homes on Briggs and and the homes that are part of Bishop's Bay, we kind of came up with a four lot, single family residential concept that's that's in front of you. This, these four lots would have sanitary sewer, city sewer. It would not have water elevations. They they would have wells for each individual home and all these lots would be accessed by a private driveway off of County Highway Q. And we've got some areas, kind of green areas shown on this plan blocked in for, you know, possible stormwater areas. Those could be moved around depending on where, you know, where it's more advantageous tree wise or to maintain, you know, better, better screening to adjacent properties. We've shown a pull off area and tried and a trip, you know, cul-de-sac turnaround that's for emergency services. It's not intended to try and make this an enormous road. We're we'll, you know, fine tune those after we meet with fire and EMS and just make sure that they're in the right spot, they're correct with. And that they're not, you know, our intention is not to overbuild this. It's we've got a typical section there showing in the lower left hand corner. We're paving it twenty feet wide with a small gutter on one side, and that's simply to, you know, protect the road edge, provide and and have a discreet area where we can at times. You know, direct stormwater to the stormwater basin. So the ribbon curb that's shown there would be more like a just kind of a mountable curb. If you would, just enough to kind of catch the water and not have, you know, the driveway road as it goes down, because some of these slopes are are a little steep as you go up this hill. Overall, the intention is not to try and deforest this. It's to try and maintain as many trees as we can while obviously still doing a development. So they're, you know, we've not gone gotten to the point where we've thought to if it would be appropriate to 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 meander this road at all, we're trying to stick to the third, the existing access easement that goes across these properties so that we can get up to the property on the east. There's no further development proposed on the stem portion of the project. So this is a little bit different than maybe a traditional development in that Mister Meyer, you know, is developing one of these lots for himself. This is not just a turn turnkey operation for development firm. So with that, that's, you know, that combined with what Tom said before, that's that's kind of our project in a nutshell. If Jordan wants to fill in some gaps, I'm I'll let him do so now.
I'm really just here for any questions or any concerns, if anybody has any for me. I'm available for any of those.
So I have questions, but I don't want to jump ahead of anyone from the town if they want to ask first.
Please do. Is it you, Kurt Stocken?
Yes.
Okay, Kurt, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so um, first, just a comment that generally when we look at something like this from the city's perspective. If the property is going to remain in the town and not have public water and sewer and or be annexed to the city, we generally defer to the the town on their zoning standards. So, Tom, if this were, what what would the zoning standards that would apply be in terms of the lot size? Is it a that what you called community residential? Hope you're muted.
You're muted.
Yeah, the the plan was for this to stay in the town to be consistent with with Briggs Road, that kind of development. Or as we did last time, somewhat consistent with the the larger condominium units or down below. So what would I say as far as what kind of specifics for community residential do we have in our comprehensive plan? There's not really a lot of specifics in there, Kurt. It's what you do here is consistency with with current neighborhoods. And so for here, you know, the the real adjoining neighborhood here is is bricks, frankly. So that that's kind of what you'd be looking at.
And like that's those four houses.
Has been for this to stay in the town. And there it is. Thanks. And that's that. Don't know that that's the final Cardinal Crest, but might be close. I think we we had there for a second, the final Cardinal Crest actually had all four units together in the middle.
Sorry, I I was I was trying to pull it up and then I accidentally closed it.
It's okay. So is there you go. That's your that's your answer, Kurt. That's what I got for you.
Cardinal Crest was the one that was approved by a conditional use permit you talked about twenty years ago.
Yes. Oh, okay. I didn't.
It was.
It was?
Yes.
Well, I I'm sorry, I corrected you earlier, and that makes a lot more sense now that I think about it. I'm so so much thinking P D D is these days. So thank you for clarifying.
It's one lot. Um. And so the houses that on the site plan that we see that are to the west of this. That's the neighborhood, right, that we're considering? And those are usually about one to two acre homes? Or is because I've I think they're all two acres about or one and a half.
They're one and a half at least, yeah.
Okay. And so the applicant is proposing what size lots again?
Mark, can you? Well, you got about three quarters, I think. And about an acre and then about an acre and a half. So the two, the two southerly ones are a little smaller. The the next one, the third one is an acre and then the one to the north, because it has that cul-de-sac in it is a little larger. That's I think about acre and a half, maybe an acre and quarter. Acre and a half, I think.
And so again, I would to the town, what zoning standards you would think is appropriate, because if that if these parcels would ever come into the city, we would want much smaller lot sizes and pretty much allowing this would preclude them coming into the city ever in the future, but it sounds like that's already been agreed that those won't come into the city. So I'm I'm fine with whatever zoning standards you want. I guess the only other question is is for our residents in Shore Crest, which is the neighborhood in the city just south of this parcel. I know that they're going to express concern once they hear about this, about adding that private drive in in what for them is their kind of forested backyard. Admittedly, they don't own that forested land, Mister Wagenke does. But I guess the question to the applicant is how much of that forest will be left after you put in the road? So as to minimize the impact on those city properties in Shore Crest. And it's a twenty foot wide road. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
How wide is the parcel?
I'm sorry to hear that.
I can. How wide is the parcel?
How wide is this?
No, yeah, that.
Hundred feet.
Want to say it's a hundred and twenty one feet.
Yeah. Hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.
Under thirty.
Oh, so there'll be plenty of tree cover remaining.
Correct.
I mean, there's a driveway there already, too. It's staying.
Residents have kind of migrated their lots towards that direction already and but, you know, overall, we're our intention is only to is to try and stick the road in the existing easement, which is already all the way to the north. You know, there may be some additional tree clearing that needs to happen just to make sure drainage goes downhill in a controlled manner. And then we're going to have stormwater management areas at the top and bottom of the hill that will have to be cleared to trees and and excavated. So those are going to be, you know, bio retention type basins. So they're not, they're not going to be standing water type facilities. So you know, that the intention is not to clear cut this entire width. It's just to fit in what we have to fit in in order to make the stormwater work and and get a road through there.
I I do suspect that you will get some pushback from those neighbors on the on the north end of Shore Crest, once they see the construction mature. So we're just trying to kind of get ahead of that. When you submit a detailed site plan? Or is this, you'll submit a more detailed site plan?
Correct. Yeah, this is, we've taken this concept level only because before we get into all the engineering and 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 all the specifics, we want to make sure we've got a viable, you know, route forward.
We we will want to look carefully at the grading plan just to make sure we preserve as many of those trees as possible for those neighbors. That's all my questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Kurt. Anyone else have questions or comments?
I just have a couple of questions. I'll just I'll rattle them off and then I'll wait for the answer. The condition, the C U P you said is current for the plan for the condos that was there before, so they could come in and put those condos in under that current permit. Um, or current plan. My second question is why the why four lots? Why not three to stay with more of the neighborhood feel with a larger lot? And I guess that was those. Those are my two main questions, if I could get those answered.
Tom, you want to help us with that?
I think Mark might be able to help with the C U P question, because, you know, I know it was maintained for for a year, because that was, I believe, all you had to do go the was go to the plan commission and get approval to extend it for another year, but I don't know if that's been done lately. Mark, do you know?
So what I am looking up here is here's the original ordinance amending establishing the zoning for the property. And it was hereby we've gone from county A three to P D D S I P.
Oh, you're right. Sorry, I was wrong. So first time for everything.
Well, it that I I'm wrong.
What's the date on that, Mark? Sorry.
I'm wrong much more often than that. This was Yeah, so you said fifteen years ago, so you were spot on for that, Tom. So what happens then is we have language in here that says that these these laps, if not if S I P isn't piled within a certain time period. Although ironically, it's not in this ordinance, but it was in subsequent ones. So so that's why then in subsequent years, we had most recently in twenty eighteen. We had the move by Murray seconded by some guy named Paulson to reapprove and recommend reapproval to the council of the S I P. So it just carried that forward.
Gotcha.
In in, you know, so and then that is an effect for five years.
Okay, thank you.
That's why we actually changed. We used to have every one one year, but then because we kept seeing John Wagenki come. That was actually the main reason we changed it to five. We thought one year was was.
No. State law changed.
I'm just kidding.
State law requires it for five years.
Yes, thank you.
With the S I P now, does that does that mean that there are no granted number of of lots or otherwise that that can be put there like as we talked about going back to a C U P that we agreed on for, I think, or something like that? Is that overridden by the what we have here, what you just showed us?
So in our file, which I did not review prior to the meeting, I'm just going through it now. We have
Wait, while he's looking for that, Ken, what happens is I I was wrong. We use the we use the P D D zoning for that. So there was a specific implementation plan and S I P approved for those four units, as you saw in that plan. And that is still in place apparently until two thousand twenty three. So that's in effect right now.
Absent any change.
Was is that in effect right now? The answer to that is, yes, it is. Somebody could take what was approved back in the day and begin construction on that, which would be an access road. They'd have to follow all the current standards. But they they could do that. Yes. This would have to change that zoning to probably single family residential. So it would require a rezoning. Which is why it's here for.
Could this be an amendment to the the S I P that is amended to this configuration?
I don't think there was an S I P. I think just a G I P.
Well, actually, if you looked at that the ordinance that was adopted, it does say S I P says the P D D S I P language that you use. So and that says specific implementation plan to Kurt. So.
I oh, okay. I frankly wonder whether that should have read G I P, to be honest.
No, I am. I'm pretty sure we got to the S I P process. It was ready to roll. We did work to get sewer up there to the property and it was all ready.
Plant is recorded.
If the No, good point. Thank you. So in my view, to answer the question, would would we need to have an amendment? I think as I guess as zoning administrator, there's four units. They're just being configured differently. There's still single family homes. It's a different ownership structure. I I mean, my off the cuff, I'd say that's that could be handled just as a new S I P. I think the, you know, I'd have to, I'd have to dig a little deeper to see what the original ordinance said, but it was simply a zoning change to P D D. And I don't know what the original, what that was based on originally. So.
Mark, can you open that doc that you have there to plat two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
That you have.
Thank you. I have it here already.
Oh, you had opened it already. Oh, okay.
I showed it to.
Okay, got it, got it. Now it now it fits together for me. Okay, thanks. Now I understand it.
Yeah. So so the driveway is in the same location as as Kurt pointed out, or I think so, Tim pointed out. You know, it's it's in the same location. The difference is they're trying to, they're they're proposing houses. You know, the lots being, well, here, I'll show you what the, I mean, you know what it is. You've seen it. So you know, in my view, it's comparable. It's comparable enough. It wouldn't need a new G I P. It wouldn't need a G I P amendment. I think it's just a I don't know. I'd have to check with our attorney, because this is our condo plat. So we'd be replay, it'd be a new plat or maybe it could be, can you take a C S M to a condo plat? I I would think. I don't know.
You can take a condo plat to a C S M.
You can. Can't you said?
You can.
Yeah, I would think so, too. So.
But we're still talking about the same number of units on that particular lot. And four were already approved, just condos versus, but they were individual standing condos, not not a connected building. So it's just a slightly different configuration. Correct? Okay.
Correct.
And but still my question for, I don't know who wants to answer. It 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 seems that to make neighbors happy, if you would consider going to three to stay more consistent with the size lots that are there. I mean, it looks like four giant blocks right now, like there would be no trees or anything. And and I understand that's not the way it's going to look as a finished product. But if somebody could just answer, would you consider going to three lots instead of the four? Just as a question. Thanks.
Well, part of this was indeed, you know, the condo layout here would have probably clear cut quite a bunch more off the top of the hill, to be honest, because all those units, you wouldn't had a single stick of wood between any of them. Honestly, you would had a pretty large open space at that configuration. With this size lot. Yeah, I mean, there's the possibility of going to three. I think that's more of probably a question for Jordan. As he's the As he's the financial interest in this, obviously. And knowing that, you know, what Dr. Wigan he's asked for the, you know, to purchase the parcel. So. Do you want to step on that one, Jordan?
I don't mind to. I guess part of the logistics of it is the elevation that we're dealing with. I, I think you can see the reason why Dr. Yankee had those three north units where they are is because that's at the highest elevation. If we're going to change that to a single family home, the furthest north section of that is a very steep elevation. We don't, the back probably quarter of that lot will not be very functional at all as backyard or anything like that. So that's what's extending the, yeah, there's a nice typographic. That's what's increasing the size of that, that lot one. The rest of it really just comes down to economics. You know, this, this land was for sale for, I think, better part of 20 years now. And it was a long and strenuous negotiation with Dr. Wagenke. And, and he was asking a high number for it. The, the lots that we originally or the plan that we originally proposed had duplex condos on, on the entry acreage to try and, try and make this a little bit more feasible, just from the economic standpoint. But you know, in the original conversations with, with Westport, we agreed that those should be removed to better fit the density. We need to probably set close to a non waterfront land sale record here. This is going to be at the very high end of, you know, the price point in terms of vacant land when they go to market. And that's just kind of the, the reality of it. I, I understand kind of the, the size concern, but we are even on the smallest lots that we're looking at, we're, we're looking at a little bit more than three quarters of an acre lot for a single family home. I, I, I know that it doesn't compare perfectly to the, the Briggs Road situation at two acres apiece. But you know, just south of there and it is in Middleton. Those are, I think, on an average of point three, point four acres per parcel. So that's about the best answer I can, I can give you on that part.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, Mark or Tom, um, we had it up there. I'm actually looking on a Google map. What is the, the building, the large rectangular building just to the east of that property line? We can kind of see a road there. Is that part of Bishop's Bay?
It's part of the golf carts, Ken. That's their utility building where they work on. It's a pretty noisy building. Actually, they, they work on a lot of repairs there and their mowers are kept in there and yeah, it's their shed.
It's just a big odd building and it, it doesn't have the, the access to it looks a little, well, I guess it's off signature drive.
Yeah, it's off signature. And then there is another building that's at the top of the hill that I don't know that's shown on here or that we can even see it, but it's a, it's a, they got a turn house that was approved up there at the top of the hill. So as the carts go down the hill, the whole number five, which is right below Joe Pichet's house on Brick Road, there, there is a little turn house building there that's like a little shelter. There it is right there. It's a park shelter, a shelter that serves hot dogs, hamburgers, and you know, Heineken light and good beers like that.
Okay, thank you. Well, this is our initial consultation. So.
I think Randy had his hand up.
Please go ahead. I can't see everyone on my screen, so I don't get to see everybody.
Uh, that, that's fine. Uh, just a couple of kind of more detailed observations. I don't know, Tim, following up on Kurt Paulson's comments about impacts on, to the city residents to the south. I don't know if there's any flexibility in the design or the location of the stormwater that's planned at the kind of the southeast corner. That, that is also going to be just where the, the driveway makes a turn. And, and I'm just envisioning headlights and so on, coming across to the neighbors to the south there. If, if there's a way to maintain some foliage or to, to do something to buffer that, I think that would be appreciated. The only other comment, and this is more in regards to the, you know, the, the concerns of the Briggs Road residents and the loss of trees. I, I wonder if, if the applicant would be willing to to, to do a, you know, a tree preservation plan perhaps that would, you know, the lots could be sold and developed for single family homes, but at the same time, existing trees could be maintained on the sites and that could be done through, you know, either construction techniques or location of the homes on the lots and so forth. So those are my, those are my comments.
Thanks, Randy.
Ken, can I, can I just reply just briefly to Randy? Because he's.
Briefly, you can. Yes.
Briefly, thank you. We've done that in other, in other, some of these rural developments, you know, required, required the, where the building is going to be located, like you saw in the condo development. And, you know, tree inventory to try and preserve trees and even a planning plan and then even conservation, even easements over certain portions of the land that it should not be touched. So yeah, there are some things that we can do, Randy. It's a good suggestion because it helps preserve as much as we can there. And still allow for some reasonable construction, right? So, thank you.
Yeah, I think, do we, do we ourselves in Westport have a tree ordinance?
We do.
Yeah, for present preserving good trees, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Are these good trees or are these invasives?
Some, probably a little of both. But that's what a tree study would tell us, you know?
Yeah. I would, I would note in case you can't see this number, this is 142. You know, so the road, you can actually see the driveway up here. So this would actually be about 150 foot buffer to the adjoining houses of which those houses themselves don't have screening on their property. All the screening is on the Wagenke property. You know, but my point is this is, you know, 75 foot buffer. That's largely deciduous, but it still is quite a bit of a buffer. And I think the headlights would be a pretty minimal impact even in the winter.
I, I had gotten the impression, Mark, that that's where the stormwater management was going to go.
And it I see, I see. Randy, you're right. I'm sorry.
And, and we've only, that's more, again, this is a concept plan. This is going downhill to the left. So these are going to, all these stormwater ponds are going to look more probably like a teardrop shape. Or, you know, something like that. So it's not going to be a perfect rectangle and I wouldn't propose to necessarily complete it that way. And as much as we can push it towards the drainage easement or towards the private drive, that would be our intent. My only purpose in kind of showing a larger block like this is so that there's not too minute, too much shock when something comes back in the door and that's where the stormwater goes. That was, but yeah, certainly we can, we can adjust. You know, adjust where that stormwater management facility falls. That's not, not, not a, not a big issue. And, and we can probably even tighten up the, the corner a little bit to minimize the amount of time lights are sweeping across backyards. That's just shown in there to kind of make sure we provide, you know, we, we push the north, south segment of this for this to the, to the, you know, to, to the west and, and to provide a turning radius for emergency vehicles. But we'll dig into those and, and tighten those up as, as this design progresses.
Water would naturally flow this way.
Yeah.
So it actually has some flexibility to where you move that a little bit.
Right.
Can I just follow up? Mark, you zoomed in and thank you for that. I had not seen that the road was actually there. It doesn't show up in the kind of Google map. So is the road you're proposing pretty much going to follow that path? Or does it end basically at the east end of the current?
So the current property, the current road does this, the driveway does this and then kind of sweeps up like this.
But the driveway goes all the way out to Q.
Right. But the driveway comes in this location and then hugs the property line and then kind of bends up like this and bends back. That's what I'm, I'm seeing it right here. Comes like this, bends up, bends back.
So it's already there so that for those short crest houses, it's not going to be much of a difference at all.
Well, unless the stormwater, as Randy pointed out, unless the stormwater, unless the, a lot of the trees are removed to accommodate the pond.
Correct.
It would be for the stormwater, not for the road. Okay.
It might be a little bit of both, only because a path, you know, we're proposing a 20 foot wide road where this, I don't know exactly how wide the clearing is for the current path. So but our intention would not be to, you know, massively over engineer this and make it wider than it really has to be.
Dean, did you have your hand up?
I did. I just wanted to, since it's a consultation, just going to give you my random thoughts here. I don't necessarily have a problem with four, four residential lots as compared to a condominium plat back there. I think that the driveway and the stormwater and all that stuff has been contemplated already. And so I don't know if we should unnecessarily hold up anything here, but I would be very interested in what our neighbors on Briggs Road and, and perhaps in the Shortcrest Division think about this, but that's further down the line, of course. But my initial reaction is, is it fits well in Westport and it's, and it's bigger lots and, and single family homes. I'm not a big fan of condominiums anyway. So I think the devil's in the details, as I say, from time to time, and that is definitely the tree thing. I think we have to work on whether or not the, you know, the, the trees can be preserved in, in, in numbers that make sense. And we might even want to consider having predefined building envelopes, not to be too hard on the developer here, but, but so that we as, as planning bodies know that, that this relatively sensitive area is going to be developed as sensibly as it can be. So those are my initial thoughts. I'm not really opposed to it, but I could change my mind if everybody that lives around there has a problem with it. But I think it has to be framed in the backdrop that we could do for condo, condominium dwellings there and have the same traffic and the same headlights and everything else. And so those are my, those are my current thoughts on the subject.
Yeah, I've got about the very same thoughts as you do, Dean. I think it is in the details. I think we've talked about all the issues that we have tonight. And what of course we could be facing is, is, is the, is the four condominiums and clear cutting the land. And we would have nothing to say about it whatsoever. So in these circumstances, we have, it sounds as though the developer is amenable to working with some of the concerns that we have as we've heard tonight. And so it's actually a better circumstance than what exists now. But it, it does need to be in the details. I, I, I'm not, I would not be asking them to cut it from three to four. I've explored a three, excuse me. I mean, yeah, that would be great, but I think from our own dealings on this, it's, it, it isn't going to end up in the hands of, of this person. Because it won't, it won't be financially feasible. And not, and, and not only that, but it's already set for four. So I, it would be nice, but I don't think that that would work in the, in, in our overall favor. But yes, Cynthia, no, Tom, wait, we already know you. Cynthia, Randy, Kirk?
Um, I think I've asked all my questions and they've all been answered. Thank you.
Okay.
Are you looking for motion or this was?
No, no, no. I'm just, just, you know, since it's I think we've expressed, had questions, expressed our concerns and since we would usually say, yeah, we're either we're not, it's not a no go or that type of thing. Yeah. So if you have, if you don't have anything else, that's fine too.
Was there any comment about utility connections? I think that was something we had flagged.
With this, with this connective city water?
No.
It was never planned to be, no.
Okay. Because one of those maps showed a water current water line.
It, the elevations put it too high. So Kirk, what we do is we would say if water was ever extended to serve, you know, any property adjacent to this, we'd have that right as a restriction on the CSM that's put together, that they need to connect to that water main. And at their, at their cost, at the time that that extension is done. We, we do that all the time in the town. So we just do that here too. And sewers available because we worked really hard. The, the homes in Westport along Signature are not on the water. Condos are on city water. They're also on town sewer, which is interesting, but so you'd have town sewer here. That, that's all I was going to say. And then, and then Ken, I just want to let you know too, that we did tell, we did tell Mr. Meyer to meet with the neighbors over there. I think he's met with a few of them. But you know, he, I think it might've been more on the overall concept than, and they sure want like, you know, Cindy said, can't you do less? And I think maybe now if he has some specifics about locations of homes and trees to save and things like that, it'll be a lot more fruitful conversation. But it is just a consult, just to let him know what the issues are, if he wishes to go forward. And I think you've gotten to that point.
All right, great. Um, if there's no other comments from anyone else or no other questions, let's go ahead and move on from this to our next item, which is number two. That is to request to amend the general implementation plan pertaining to a 20 acre parcel directly east of 2043 Anken Road. And this is the question concerning the possible cemetery. So I don't know where, I, I guess, let's see, where do we want to start with this? I think that the, the, for me, the clear jumping off point is to hear, and I think I'd like to hear from the Middleton plant commissioners about what happened last night. I know Mark spelled this in too, but you know, Kurt or, and Randy, if you want to tell us what happened last night or summarize it or brief us, that'd be great.
Kurt, do you want to do that? I'm happy to do that. I, I was just.
I was trying to get Mark off, off that seat, but that's okay.
That's okay. My seat's at about 98.6 or something right now.
And, and George says, George Zane says he was the adult in the room who reined us in. So we should hear from him.
I don't know if he said that, but so last night the plank mission held the hearing that was required for the G I P amendment. I'll back up by saying that I, as the city zoning administrator had made the determination that a G I P amendment was necessary. The original zoning for the neighborhood was neighborhoods for this lot, I should say, was neighborhood civic, which identified various uses, but did not specifically list cemeteries and funeral homes. And so I felt it was most prudent to have that specifically stated since there were specific uses identified for that zoning cast category that we should do the G I P amendment. The comprehensive, and so that master development plan is the G I P, as you all know. The comprehensive plan for the city, since the slot is, is planned to remain in the city, be in the city. And it is in the city. The comprehensive plan is identifies it as parkland. And so the developer has actually evolved the, the, I'll go show you the site plan and I won't speak to the site plan. That's the developer's job. But, but I will note that the features that are in the, that it's largely open space. And I'll first say here's the site right up here. If you can see it, I can zoom in. Well, here it zoomed in on the right here. That's the original site with the two schools, two institutional uses that were proposed with open space in, in between. And so what the developers proposing is this site to be largely green space consisting of a natural burial cemetery. There's another view of it. And here's a view looking east from this corner, the southeast corner of the, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of the property looking east. So you see that adjoining house here. It's an approximately 20 acre property. Last night on the rezoning on the G I P amendment, the plank mission had a hearing. Last night on the rezoning, on the GIP amendment, the Plank Commission had a hearing. Re- reviewed about ten comments in opposition. And, uh, that were statements provided prior to the meeting, and then during the meeting, there were four people who spoke in opposition. And then three associated with the application that spoke in support. And the discussion points with, and I shared these with you earlier today. Um, discussion points, uh, I've already touched on some of these. Um, no plans to, uh, annex the, the, the three houses that are to the west. There's no plan to annex those in the, in the near future at all. No, no plans whatsoever, actually. And, um, so that was a discussion point. There was, um. A question about which other regulations outside the cities, specifically state, uh, Wisconsin regulations pertaining to cemeteries. Um, which the city doesn't enforce those. Uh, the city standards regarding, um, regulations of conditional uses. This is not a conditional use property. It could be something that could be part of the zoning, but it's not. The way that I felt we needed to go as zoning administrator, but that is obviously something that you can. There can be discussion about that at the Plank Commission and, and your role tonight is to provide guidance to the council, because. Ultimately, the Plank Commission last night decided to make a motion of no recommendation, neither, neither for or against the project. And they forward that to the council as their, uh, motion on a five to two vote. So you have an opportunity here to inform the council's vote. On the, uh, GIP amendment. Um, they'll add, the other category, I jumped ahead, the, the other. General, there was fair amount of discussion about how the cemetery would operate, density of the plots, how they are dug, how they would be covered. Um, noise from gun salutes associated with the veterans, um, portion of the cemetery. Um, and then also today you received additional comments from one of our commission members, Gretchen. Uh, Erdman Herr- Herman, who, um, I, this is attached here in this document. So, and she's present at the meeting as well, if you have any questions about those comments. So that's all I really have for you.
And just to, just to add to Mark's excellent summary. Um, a lot of the concern expressed by neighbors and by, um, Gretchen focused in on the. The nature of the previous land use being a quarry with some fill and concerns about, um. Potential groundwater contamination, which, um, as, as we discussed. Is largely outside of our jurisdiction from a zoning and planning standpoint. Um, but you can understand why people nearby, because it's, it's a unique enough land use they're concerned, so. Um, as we get more information about what permits and groundwater are required, that would be at the. At the permit stage, not something we can do on. Um, the other question I'd asked Mark is from a zoning perspective, the kind of open, um. Park shelter with the parking lot, um, that that looks. Like the ancillary type of use that you would expect with any open space, so it's somewhat equivalent to, um. Like a, a parking lot for the conservancy, uh, which might be filled, obviously. Uh, when funerals and memorial services happen, but otherwise is.
Oh, yeah.
People can park there and walk around and that, um, so that the main use from a zoning perspective is. Um, this hybrid of institutional and. Uh, park, because it's a cemetery, but it's, um, mostly gonna look like a park from the outside. I guess the only other question I forgot to ask last night was. Um, if there's a distinction in the zoning amendment between a cemetery and a natural cemetery. Or how we would impose the conditions that they, the applicant continue to, like, that he's proposed it as a natural burial. Um, but that, um, we'd want to make sure to write the rezoning so that a, I guess, traditional burial with caskets and. Whatnot would not be permitted there. So that's just a, a note for the, whenever we write the rezoning ordinance.
And, um, Kurt or, or Randy, if you, if you want, uh. What, what was the rationale for sending this to the council with no recommendation?
So I made that recommendation and, um. The reason I made that as a substitute motion was that the motion on the floor was to defer. And, uh, it seemed to me that we had had. You know, and again, this had been our second meeting on it, and we'd already had a lot of input. So it didn't look to me like we were gonna get necessarily clear consensus from the commission or. That it would just be dragged out with the process. So knowing that we were gonna have a chance to, uh, get the town's input tonight, I thought. Let's at least send it to council so that they can make the decision, because ultimately a rezoning has to go before them anyway. That was my motivation. Um. Okay, I don't know what Randy says.
Uh, I had, I had made the, uh, the, the original motion to, to defer, uh. Um, only because the meeting was dragging on, there's additional questions that were being raised. I wanted to give, uh, time for those questions to be, um. You know, to, to be addressed and answered, um, just, just to keep the public, um. Involved in the process, but, um, I think when Kurt made the substitute motion. Um, I did, uh, vote, uh, to refer it on understanding that we were at somewhat of a. Natural breaking point or stopping point.
Thank you. Um, I have, I have one question, and, uh, maybe I think this is probably for Mark and for Tom Wilson as well, and that is. In the comments that, and, and I read, I think I read everything that came from. Uh, everyone, including, uh, developer, uh, that came today as well as the packet, and I was at the previous meeting. Um, what, here's my question, so, so there's the, so. The DNR and maybe some other state or other regulating body. It seems would have to, some permits would have to be met. But I'm just saying this as, this, take this as, um, a hypothetical, which I think is a correct hypothetical. But none had said, but we don't, but we, meaning the city zoning, the city council. Us as a recommending body don't really have, I, I'll put it this way, anything to do with that. My question is, is why not? Why, why wouldn't we condition anything that we might recommend out of this body? On all of the necessary permits and so forth, being, um, uh, obtained, approved. Everything that needs to be done, um, in order to, for this project to go forward. Am I, am I missing something there?
I understand your question. Are you directing that to me?
Sure, I said Mark or Tom.
Yeah.
I look like he's texting right now, so.
Oh, I would take a shot at it and say that, for you, what's before the city is specifically the land use. Uh, question as it relates to the, the zoning, um, the uses allowed by zoning. And whether, you know, how that function on the property performs is subject to other regulations. That the city and, and town, in this case, the city doesn't regulate, so. Uh, we can, you know, obviously, we, we approve stormwater plans, things like that. But just like with many other projects, uh, in, in our, both of our communities. The county and in some cases, the DNR get involved in those as well, and. Those are separate layers of, of approval that, uh, the city doesn't have any influence over. I guess they would be interested to know if the city, you know, if, if the, if the city decides this is not an appropriate land use. Then obviously those other steps don't go forward, but if the city does decide to, to say the cemetery is appropriate. They still need to get those, uh, approvals separately from those governing agencies anyway, and if they're doing their job. Then, you know, which they are required to do, then those protections are still there. Tom looks like he wants to.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, I'm just reading from Mark's joint zoning committee agenda. Planning staff does not have any objection to the GIP amendment, as long as the secretary, as the cemetery, the secretary, sorry, I was thinking Craig Thompson. The cemetery is developed in accordance with all applicable state regulations, so. Yeah, we've done that in the past. I think this body's probably done that in the past. They have to, we want. Uh, developments like this to comply with any state, federal, other local or county, county rules. And we could certainly make that, um, any type of. Condition or restriction on the SIP that they have to provide us before they proceed that they have received all applicable. State permits to be able to proceed. I think that's. That's something we could sure add as a, as a condition, if you decided to go through and approve this. And can I be happy to go through different options for you if you, if you want, but I'm gonna let you tell me if you want me to do any.
I know, yeah, now at this point, I do have one other question for you, Tom, and, and then I will get on with this. But, uh, can you summarize the, uh, any, um, response, any comments we've had from the Westport? Residents?
Yeah, uh, so what you saw from them is concerns that were, uh, listed here as well. There were. Yeah, I believe two of the, the three homes there got back to us. I don't know if the third one did or not. On Anken that were nearby, and they're just don't really like the idea of a cemetery next to them. Uh, the comp plan has that it's going to be park or open space, and I know the developer made it, made. Significant changes in their plan to make it more park-like, but it's still a cemetery. It's. It is open and people can walk on it. There's a bike trail going through the middle of it, which has been planned for. Um, but, you know, so that was their comment. They were concerned about, about water, um. Which is something that was mentioned last night, and certainly, you know, we could look at groundwater studies, uh, do a. You, you know, a condition of a groundwater study to see if there is any potential for concern. I kinda. Doubt whether there is, but you know, I'm a political scientist and attorney. I'm not a, I'm not a water geologist. Um, and I, they, they were concerned at one point about traffic with the funeral home, but that's gone. Um, so I guess that's the, the backup. They were, they, they seemed opposed to it. From the standpoint that it's not as park-like as they want in the comp plan. Even though the master development plan had schools there or churches there, um, and then. They, they just were concerned about, about water mainly, and, you know, trespass and things like that, but. That's what we heard from them, Ken. I, I did mention something to the developer about. You know, you need to reach out to those folks and talk to them about the revisions that you've made specifically, because they may have been comments made. On the previous plan that had the funeral home and, uh, and everything else, but so I don't know if that. Re-reach wa- was done to just check to see if people had a different opinion, but that's what they did say.
And if you do have questions, the development team is present, so.
Yeah, I'm going to them next.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay, thanks, um. Uh, let me just, before I, I turn to, uh, our developers, um. Anyone, um, have any questions, anyone, um, any of our committee members, committee members, have any questions of our staff? Okay, let's go.
Can I ask a question from Mark?
Go ahead, please, Kurt, go ahead.
Since, uh, Gretchen raised it in her email about the bike path. Is that shown on, uh, any of our plans or maps that would require the, um. Developer to dedicate that to us and connect it somewhere?
Um. That's probably this. Uh, let me just zoom in here if I can. I always forget how to, here we go.
Yeah, the, the concern was that if a developer just shows something on a drawing, they don't have to actually dedicate it and connect it. But if it's on an official map, then obviously that would give us that.
Um.
Authority.
I don't have this, I don't have that, that part of the master plan in, in front of me. I'm gonna open, I'm gonna go to that though, just a second. I have the hard copy here.
There's no SAP recorded for that property, right? Just the G.
No SAP, but the GIP does have map, I think it's seven off the top of my head. Yeah, pedestrian and bicycle circulation plan, so that does show, let me see if this is gonna work. That's gonna, a second, where are we here? So it does show.
Uh. Price too small for us to see on our little box.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it, it's consistent, that the answer is it's consistent.
So that would give us the. Is that there was a planned separate path along Anken. So certainly that's something as this would develop, we, I think. That the city and the town will want them to be. You know, responsible for their proportionate share, whatever that road improvement is up there, including providing for that, for that trail. Now, the developer may be doing that later, but we want to make sure it's done at some point.
Yeah, so it's, but it's, it's most, most certainly consistent with map seven of the, uh, GIP, the, the master developed plan.
Thank you.
I have one, um, one quick question for, uh, Mark and Tom. Last night, there was some discussion about whether this should be. A request for an amendment to the GIP or for a conditional use permit. Did you? Uh, to have, uh, any thought put to that?
So, so the idea of having, so right now the request is just to amend it and have it be a permitted use. So by right without, uh, you know, and then you have to build in accordance with the SIP. The advantage of going through a conditional use process, uh, the conditional use is, is always a good way to attach performance standards. For, um, you know, making sure that a particular use may not, may not be permitted by right. But if by having it requiring a CUP, a conditional use permit, then you attach standards to make sure that it, you address all potentially. Uh, negative impacts if there are any. Um, Kurt actually described it really well last night. Um, what I would say though is that that process. Then essentially the first step is to amend the GIP, which is a zoning, and then you have a separate hearing for the conditional use. So it's a two-step process, which is in some ways more burdensome. Just having a specific SIP that it, you know, and attaching conditions as part of that is, is contingencies as part of that is still fine. You know, reviewing, making sure the SIP addresses all those concerns. It's, it's kind of a, it's just an extra step that probably doesn't need to be taken in this case.
And Mark, can we make sure that then the city council rezoning ordinance? Would include some of those specificities about natural burial. Um, compliance with, because we don't usually attach conditions. In the GIP rezoning ordinance. But we want to make sure that it's in there, that it's natural burial and compliance with all state law and county law.
And, and you could, Kurt, include those things, so.
And maintenance of a, of a connecting bike path to, to make sure that we have it, you know, just written clearly. Um, to protect ourselves in case. You know. Someone, you know, tries to change something in the future or someone else buys it. Um, I know that the developer said that he's gonna, uh, have a, a private nonprofit foundation to run it. Um, but it's still good to get it in the ordinance.
Okay, any other questions for staff or comments from staff? Um, uh, go ahead. I see, uh, Madeline Walsh here. I think maybe Terrence is on with us too. Uh, if you'd like to tell us anything, um, that, well, tell us what you'd like to tell us. We, I think we have a, a fairly good background on it, but. It's your, it's your, you're the proponent, so talk to us.
Yeah, so I'll speak and then, uh, Terrence wants to speak after. So a natural burial preserve, which is defined by the Green Burial Council, is very different than traditional cemeteries. So there's no embalming allowed. You have to use a biodegradable container. There's no concrete or metal. Um, and there's no above ground, like tombs, tombstones or vaults. If people choose to have a tombstone or a headstone, they'll have to be very small and flat to the ground. But actually, a lot of families will choose to plant a tree or flowers or another plant instead and use that as a marker. So there are other traditional cemeteries in Middleton that are not, you know, that are still running, that are not subject to these environmental standards. And so that's why it's important for us to do this natural burial preserve. Um, so that we're avoiding the contamination that comes with traditional cemeteries. So there'll be lots of trees, native plants, there'll be walking trails. Um, and typically with these, you know, these are smaller funerals. This will be, you know, maybe between one and ten family members. That attend and they bury the person themselves. Um, so it'll be nice and peaceful. Um, we did remove, remove the funeral home based on feedback. And we replaced it with an open air park shelter. And then we also added a landscape buffer, um, for that house that's right next door to get a little space between that. And the natural burial preserve. Um, and we did inform, um, the seven hundred residents of the community of Bishop's Bay by email. And we also sent letters to those Westport residents, and we did give them the updated plan. So they've seen the one with the, um, landscape buffer and the curved bike path. Um, and in the back nine, the nearest house is almost half a mile away, and there's, you know, hills and trees in between. And again, there wouldn't be any, like, above-ground tombstones or anything for people to see. It's gonna look, um, like a. It's gonna look like a park if you walk by. You know, it's very quiet. It's a benign use and people will be welcome to come and walk around and walk on the paths. And enjoy the nature and all the trees and everything. And we have actually already had a few people approach us asking to purchase a burial site. So that's kind of everything. And then I know Terrence wanted to speak too.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madeline. Terrence, go ahead.
Yes, just a moment.
Sure.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, bye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for taking time. So we've been listening to feedback that we've received from the town and the and the city and and neighbors. We've made a number, quite a few changes that mentioned, Matt already mentioned, which I won't go through. Also, I did call the immediately adjacent neighbor today. She did not answer, but I did leave a message and encouraged her to call me back if she had additional questions or comments. We did add a buffer, a 50-foot buffer, landscape buffer and berm along her house. That's a very significant buffer, by the way. I want to also mention that people use the word landfill. And as you know, when we hear the word landfill, we all think, you know, garbage landfill, all kinds of detrimental thing. But this is not a landfill like you think about it. It's a quarry that was backfilled. In order to be backfilled, the quarry had to get a landfill permit from the D N R. That backfilling was done in accordance with D N R standards. There's a dirt pile out there that you see now. That's our good fill material that we're gonna be using in other, you know, road construction, et cetera, throughout Bishop's Bay. So that dirt pile will eventually go away. That's just temporary storage. I've heard a couple comments tonight that I'd like to address that I think actually are are good ideas. You know, we would be fine, Kurt, with deed restricting the property to be a natural burial site, you know, so it's permanently that way. The bike path along Anken Road, we didn't show that in here because we put the one in the center, but I have no problem with. Adding a bike path along Anken Road to our plan at the S I P level. So, you know, get the G D P approved and we'll put that at the S I P level and you can make that a condition of approval. We do have the bike path in the center to link the two linear parks on either side. We're happy to put that into an easement, you know, Kurt. I think that's a a good idea. That's a fine idea. We can do that. If you remember, well, I shouldn't say if you remember, because only probably a few of us here, you know, go all the way back on this project to 2007. When we started. And we talked about the vision in 2007, you know, through 2012, you know, five-year process to get this all proved. And I kept using the phrase cradle to grave and I would joke, hey, we've got everything cradle to grave, except I don't have a birthing center, you know, in Bishop's Bay. And we always said we wanted to be eclectic and I always talked about the word community. And the word community means encompassing everything that a community would have. And that meant children, it meant we weren't gonna make this exclusive to high-end homes. We were gonna have apartments. We were gonna have homes of various price ranges, which we have. We're gonna have senior housing, which is in the plan. We're gonna have trails, bike and pedestrian trails and a and stormwater ponds and a little town center down at Anken and Highway Q. And now we'd like to add a final resting place to our community, which would be highly appropriate and fit in with the vision. The prior use was planned to be schools. That's not gonna happen. Schools would have meant hundreds and hundreds of cars and dozens of buses every day, twice a day. Lights, noise, et cetera. This is a benign use. It's a park. When it's done, it'll have many trees and bushes, et cetera on it. It's a green and sustainable use. And we've always said that we wanted Bishop's Bay to be a leader in green and sustainability. And we are accomplishing that with many of the things that we've done in our partnership with Clean Lakes, approving solar panels and homes, et cetera. There's only one of these burial sites in the state. So I feel like we can set the standard. I personally would love to see all cemeteries, you know, going forward, be green burial cemeteries. So we could set the standard and we can help encourage that in the state of Wisconsin by approving this. You know, versus rejecting it, which would kind of set back this from being approved in other areas of the state. You know, developers will see that. We can, we can be positive here. We can, we can really make this. A showcase for our community. Recently, there's been a number of TV news reports on green burial and newspaper articles on green burial. We had nothing to do with that. Total coincidence because of the site out in Verona. You know, all of that feedback has been positive. We've gotten tons of positive feedback. You know, obviously those people are busy, you know, they don't really have the time or or really want to put their, you know, their face out there. And come to all these meetings that we have. But we have received a lot of positive feedback and including people saying, I would like to pre-purchase the site. So it is, it's exciting. I I think this is awesome. It's gonna be park. It's gonna be park when it's done. And, you know, we've got Doran Creek Park right across the street. There's a, there's a gravel parking lot there. By the way, they've got a detention pond across the street in the county park that holds. All the dredgings from Doran Creek, all the phosphate dredgings and everything. So, you know, the county put in a sort of a environmentally questionable pond. But, you know, looking at the positives, it was done in the greater context of the greater good because they cleaned up Doran Creek. And we are part of that cleanup because we put in extra-large detention ponds that we didn't need to put in. We spent a lot of money to do that way in advance to help control the farm runoff. You know, our farmer, we in our lease with our farmer, we don't allow him to spread liquid manure. He has to inject it. We don't allow him to use nitrates or phosphates. You know, we do everything we can to make this, you know, to make. Everything in Bishop's Bay very sustainable and green. And this is part of that ongoing commitment. Which I'm personally committed to and we've won awards for. So I want to continue to have that reputation built further. With this proposal. So I'll stop talking and be happy to answer your questions you have.
Okay, thank, thank you. Anyone have questions for either of the proponents?
I do, if that's okay. Just a follow-up question I forgot to ask last night, Terrence, is will there be lighting at this facility? Because again, if I'm thinking of more of the rural character, the use. Generally, road parks don't have lighting so that they, in essence, close at night.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. No, we were not planning on having any lighting. You know, if you want to put that in the approval, you can do that. You know, if you're gonna be doing a burial, think about the burial, you know, they're gonna be, it's just gonna be families. It could be three or four people typically, you know, fewer than 10 would be probably 95%.
And therefore during the day.
Exactly. So we would have limited hours of of operations. You know, we're not gonna have people out there at 6:00 AM or, you know, midnight or anything. We'll have.
You wouldn't light up like any of the monuments if there's monuments in the.
Yeah, there are no.
In the military side, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, there's, in the military side, we did, we were gonna have like a chevron, like a wall there. You know, where you could put an urn in there, again, has to be wood or something. But if you want us to remove those, those two walls, we could do that. You know, again, if you plant, if you put somebody in the ground here, you're you're using a linen or cloth or a wood casket. You know, I can see people purchasing a natural wood casket. My uncle Steve is a monk in Dubuque and they make. New Mallory Abbey or monastery makes natural wood caskets. But it's designed to be natural. Your urn, you could put your urn in here, has to be wood. So it's all about, you know, keeping it natural so that everything is gone after, you know, 20 or 30 years. You know, after you put something in the ground, it's gone.
So, so I think, I think we'll probably deal with the chevron in the military portion. At the S I P stage.
Yeah.
And then the only other question is, I forgot to ask last night. It might be more of a question for Mark. You know, obviously, we want to try to protect the three homes in Westport right off Anken Road. But the parcel just south of that, that's the Ziegler parcel. And that's currently in the city. Nope. The one to the moving cursor down. Yes. So to the west of the the burial, but south of those, that one, yes. That's a Ziegler property. And then the ones just south of that, that's Paulson, no relation. I wish I was. Mark, those are all in the city. Do we know what the future plans for those parcels might be? That might, if we're concerned about the incompatibility of cemetery next to whatever Ziegler is planning on that parcel.
Those are part of the Reserve Hill neighborhood.
They are. Oh, okay. So it's part of the G I P already.
Right, right. So here are the three houses, the three, I'm sorry, the three single-family houses in the town of. And the rest of this would be a lot of different types of plots.
And that looks like those are more of alley-loaded kind of single-family. Okay. So that's why we will look again at a detailed landscaping plan on. The entire west side of this cemetery when when you propose it. And your north arrow in your drawing, Terrence, is a west arrow, an east arrow.
I provided this. Wait, what drawing are you referring to now?
No, the the one where he, that one. Look at his north arrow. It's not, that's not north.
Yeah.
It's supposed to point to the left, Terrence.
Yep, that's a beer backer thing. Yes, we'll correct that.
But anyway, I just, I I would want to encourage a landscape buffer, not just against those three houses. But along the entire western part of the parcel, since it'll, but future single-family.
Well, that's the beauty of, that's the beauty of doing this now, because, you know, you don't want to do it after the homes are moved in, right? You want it now, so when they do move in and we'll put in, you know, notices and disclaimers, et cetera. But again, a lot of homeowners seek out being near a park or cemetery because it's free park space for them.
All right, Andy, um, oh, good. Here, well, any other questions for?
Randy's got his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mark, could you put up the master plan again? Just thinking about what Kurt had just mentioned about the buffer. Is, is, do I see streets on either side then of this? Are there streets that are actually bordering the cemetery?
Uh, yeah, it looks like.
On east, east and west side?
Well, that's true. Yeah, it does show tree-lined streets.
Yeah.
Those could easily be shifted, you know, slightly off the property. Except for in the case of where the residence is directly west. And then, keep in mind, that was also when there was a school, when there were two school buildings proposed, so that level of use of, you know. Think there'd be other redesign happening and the these streets would probably be less important because there'd be less traffic. There'd be, a cemetery is a pretty quiet land use.
We don't have an S I P for that, right? That section?
No.
Okay, good.
I'm not, I wasn't arguing for the streets or against the streets, really. I I it was, it was more. A matter if they are gonna be streets. That that it still look as a public space, in other words, not be fenced. You know, I'm thinking about some, some city cemeteries that I've seen where it's, you know, you've got chain-linked fences. Or some other fence around it that keeps it as a totally private use. I don't know what, if Terrence, if you've got any comments that you you can make relative to. You know, what what you would do is in terms of control around the perimeter of that site.
Um, yes. We were working it with the city on the Reserve Hill layout and everything and, you know, that's got some more work to do. But we were, you know, we were maybe gonna put the street outside of this 20 acre right next, you know, on the. East side, we were gonna probably, we might put a street in there. But yeah, the the having streets on both sides only reflected the fact that we had, you know, very high intensity uses to schools, you know, there. We definitely won't need both streets, but the one on the side would be outside this 20 acres.
And if you have, yeah, if you have a street, would it be, would it be fenced? Then, I mean, is the space gonna be, is the space gonna be fenced or will it be, you know, just open to the, to the adjoining properties?
Yeah, we want it just to be open like a park, you know, you could just walk in, you know, we we don't want to restrict, you know, access with fencing or anything.
Okay, that's all I had.
Great. Thanks, Randy. Anybody else have their hand up? It looks like Cynthia does. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Um, I'll start with Madeline. I asked the last time you spoke to us. If you could provide some documentation of. The lack of or groundwater contamination that's been studied around these natural burial areas.
Yeah, so the Green Burial Council. Has a website with lots of different articles and specifically there is one called The Science Behind Green and Conventional Burial. And that Pan American Health Organization is quoted as saying there's little evidence of microbiological contamination of groundwater from burial. And then they actually go on to say that no contamination has been reported from or near any green cemetery in the US, Canada, Great Britain. Or Australia since their inception in 2003.
Are any of the other green burial areas this close to a, an area that's going to be very densely populated? I mean, I'm under no. I I understand that Anken Road is going to change and once all of these homes get built in the Reserve Hill area. That traffic changes and I, you know, I don't have an issue with whether it's a school and there's buses coming in. But the the groundwater with the density and the number of burials that you're talking about. Potentially 500 per acre in this area. It would be advantageous for us to to see what this ground can handle. What I understand what's underneath it. You're saying there's fill and rock and all those other things. But these, this is a very specific use and it's a very big change. To what, what was initially planned there. But I would, it would be interesting to see and I wish that you'd actually sent that, provided it to us. Which was one of my requests at the last meeting. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I can answer your question.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, so a typical burial plot is about three feet by six feet. And our burial plots, if we were to hit the absolute maximum, would be 87 square feet. Each. And again, that's only if we were to hit the maximum of 500 burials per acre. There are other cemeteries in Middleton, like there's one on Branch Street and that's right across from houses. And those are traditional cemeteries where there's embalming, there's, you know, treated wood caskets, there's metals and concrete. And most of the cemeteries like in Madison have housing all around them. And again, the difference in why we want to do the natural burial cemetery is that there are not gonna be these chemicals. And there's not gonna be all this contamination if houses are, well, when houses are built nearby.
Those houses are in city water, correct? Near those other cemeteries?
Yeah.
Okay, so anybody who has a well knows that if a mouse or something gets into your well, you need to pump it and decontaminate it. So I I I have serious concerns about the water and the wells of our Westport residents there. They do have, I wanted to thank, I know Gretchen's on this call. I wanted to thank her for her. Her work in all of the questions that she asked yesterday that were. I think a little bit dismissed, but very valid. One was the, I know that Terrence pointed out that the. Natural cemetery and it is a cemetery, it's not a park. Is X number of feet away from the next home in Reserve Hill, but it's still very. Close and adjacent to those three people who are already there and who were there before this development was planned. And they have been part of the entire. Since 2007 of seeing all of this, these changes that are going on around them, but. It's very close to their home still and it's a big concern. I also have a question about. Um, I also have a question about your funding plan. And I know it's a little more of a specific question, but this would go to the, the town and the city as to how this is going to be maintained. Um, Terrence, you touched on it a little bit yesterday, I believe, or Madeline, about the trust that's established to, in order to pay for this and to maintain it. Could you explain to me exactly how that's going to work?
Sure. First, obviously, we have to, you know, we have to make a capital contribution as we would any development, right? Um, and, and develop the initial part of this. And then, under state law, uh, there would be a portion of the fee that's paid by families uh, that goes into a trust fund for ongoing long-term maintenance of this. And the nice thing about a natural cemetery is when it's done, there's really not a lot of maintenance. You could imagine that much of this area might be forested when it's done, and so you wouldn't be mowing a lawn. Don't think of it as a mowed lawn like you would see in a traditional cemetery. That's not the intent of the Green Burial Council. In terms of, of the groundwater, I just wanna help you kind of visualize. This was a quarry, when, you know, varied in depth, but you know, call it around fifty feet deep. So there are sheer rock walls on both sides, any, anything, you know, if you had something, let's say you spilled some gasoline or something here. Let's say, you know, if there was a different use, uh, you know, that would percolate down through fifty feet. It would hit a rock floor where the old quarry be. Uh, and rock walls on both sides, so it's contained, but it's also going down through fifty feet of fill um, and, and doing its thing that it's supposed to do. You know, the biggest polluter right now, um, that's been proven in the state of Wisconsin of water well is, is farmland runoff. You know, I love farming, I like farmers, but, you know, it's something that is, you know, people are trying to address is all of this runoff that gets, you know, nitrates and such. So in our farmland leases, we prohibit our farmer from using nitrates or phosphates. We prohibit him from using spraying liquid manure that could runoff during a rainstorm following the spray. Um, he must inject it into the ground. Uh, those are the kinds of things that are biggest contributor to groundwater contamination. Um, but this is contained in a box in the ground, so to speak. Um, and there's no contamination from burying a human being. Um, it's only if that person is embalmed in metals and other artificial things are put into the ground, then that would be an issue, but that's not, that's a traditional cemetery. This is a natural burial cemetery. So that's why I wanna get, you know, all of the cemeteries in Wisconsin converted to this, right? Um, because it's so much better for the environment. You know, in my, in my will, and, you know, I specified, I don't want my body embalmed. I think that's disgusting. Um, I, I wanna be put in the ground naturally. Um, so I, I just think that, you know, we have done so much better here in our proposal than what you would see in traditional cemeteries, which are, exist throughout Middleton and Madison, et cetera. Does that help?
Explains a little bit, the, so the funding for this, though, comes from people who purchase the plots, which goes into a trust. I understand you said you'd make the capital investment. Um, and then that's managed by your foundation, or is this going to be managed by someone else?
Yes, it'll be managed by our foundation, the Wisconsin Foundation, right?
Um, the, again, I know this is, the, these are more, a little more specific, but the, at, at least the farm and the prairie, we have, um, have very specific um, plan for, and I don't know exactly what's planned for Reserve Hill. For the types of plantings, we addressed that with the church that went in, we addressed that with Inspire. And you're talking about people putting, oh, they get to put a tree there. Are, are there, are these things going to be specified? As to what kind of tree, um, they can put in there, what kind of plantings can go in there? Or will there be something to choose from? I, this, it's, as you look at the grand plan of this entire area, these are things that we've addressed with some of these other groups.
Yes, uh, yes, those are good points, and just like we have elsewhere. Um, yes, we will, um, offer to the families an opportunity if they would like to purchase a tree. We'll work with Bruce Company. And we'll provide them with a choice of trees or bushes or plantings that they can put in, or flowers um, that they can, uh, put in here. Uh, it, it's not gonna just be open-ended, do whatever you want. You know, we're gonna provide a list. Um, and you can choose from that list and, and, you know, purchase a tree or whatever, you know, let it implant it. As the family plants themselves, instead of having like an in-ground stone or something.
I can just jump in here for a minute, maybe Mark or Tom, I lost Tom on my other time. Um, uh, the, the questions that are being asked now, that Cindy is asking, are these, are these, uh, issues that would also be addressed at, at an SAP level?
We can always add as conditions of approval, which, if we get to the point and you wanna ask options, you know, that can be addressed at an SFP level, like a landscaping plan or a landscaping proposal that will be made for the different areas, you know, that you include items like, uh, that there be something shown that the groundwater, uh, will not be contaminated by this to, uh, and maybe even some testing on the, this, the neighbors' wells. I think those wells are gonna connect to the water system at some point, too, Cindy. That, that was the intent of this when it gets there, and I think the developer was gonna work with those homes on sanitary sewer and municipal water connection, because it's gonna be there, so, you know, takes out a couple holes in the ground and puts in a couple pipes. And, and other things, too, Ken, that, that, that I've already written down here about, you know, what is the planting plan and things like that? And what Terrence talked about with the, the trails going through there. And a, a lighting plan, if there's gonna be any lighting, exactly what that would be, that's gotta comply with our, with our codes already, so. Yeah, yeah, I'm taking notes, just in case you end up doing something.
Cindy, do, do you have anything else?
I have a list of notes.
Just a last comment, and then I, I just, I looked at through all of the, emails and letters that came in from people in the area, and I just didn't see a lot of support for this specific plan. I, I understand that changes are made to master plans, but this is a big change, and I don't think that it has community support.
Okay, uh, I, I, I really, uh, I'd like to, let's see, three, I'd like to get done with this in twenty-three minutes. Uh, I'd like to, nine o'clock us to be done. I, I, I have that goal. I didn't tell you that in the beginning, but, um, we've had a lot of information provided to us. Um, I think we've heard, we, our questions, a lot of our questions have been answered either by staff or by the developer, maybe not to satisfaction, but I don't know that, um, um, asking more and more uh, or debating the questions themselves is going to get us, uh, much further, so. Um, I, I don't wanna cut off anyone who wants to, to, um, ask more questions, but in reality, um, we still, uh, have an opportunity to discuss any motion that might be brought, so. Um, procedurally, I, I'm not like a professional Roberts Rules of Order on, on how we, how I do that, but I'm just saying, like, uh, like, let's move on and take some action on this. Yeah, yeah, Tom.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're ready to do that, I was just, as, thinking about this and thinking about what happened at the, at the city plant commission, and Mark is city staff, but, um, I just wanted to let you know that you, you do have options here. You know, the first option's pretty easy. You just make the same recommendation that the city plant commission made, and you move it on. You, you move it on to the city council, uh, to take whatever action they might be. I mean, that is the recommendation that the city plant commission did make, so that's like option one. You could defer if you wanted to have more information, but city plant commission isn't gonna help you. They already gave it to the city council, so you're, you're not gonna get any help from them. That, that seems like, that's probably not even a viable option, frankly. Uh, city council may kick it back to the plant commission, but I don't know. Uh, I think another option is you can just reject this. It's not consistent with the comprehensive plan or the MDP. The cemetery is not a use that's specified in the MDP, and certainly a funeral home is not, and it's, it's not a park conservation use. And that's kind of why you're at this point, which is in the comprehensive plan. So you've got, you got a basis to reject it. And the other, the other option, of course, that you have, you, you'll prove it, make a motion to recommend to the city council with the approval with conditions that you address in the SAP process. It's consistent enough with the approved MDP uses. If you think about it, it's, it's probably less intensive, certainly, than a school or a church will get, yes, less use. It's kind of an institutional use, but still not some, something that's appro, approved, so you, you'd have to prove it as a GIP amendment. And it's certainly consistent with some of your open space objectives. It, it's open, and it sounds like it's gonna be public. It's not gonna be fenced in. People are gonna have a uh, trail right through the middle of it. It's a public recreational trail. They're gonna have a trail in front, so you can make the argument that it is consistent with those open spaces, just like any other park, has shelters, quiet use and enjoyment by the public. You'd wanna make it consistent with, uh, or conditioned on the road improvements that we talked about along the front, including the trail to be considered as part of the SAP and all these, with the exact buffers for the Anken Homes and the rest of the neighborhood uh, for, for landscaping, which you discussed. Staff comments, um, in the proposal that city staff had, uh, some service comments a, as well, and that might also be a condition, is you can add that there may be, uh, city staff may have other service concerns that they would have here that need to be addressed in the SAP. We do that in the town all the time. Some type of water study or the developer shows some kind of information that says that there's not gonna be well contamination here of some type, or maybe some testing, something to be worked out in the SAP that addresses that. We certainly have to have a stormwater plan approved by the county, um, li, land and water resources and, and city engineers, uh, that meets the standards that we have in the MDP. It's something they're gonna have to do. Uh, like you mentioned before, Ken, follow applicable state, county, and city rules when it comes to these types of facilities. We talked about this being restricted to being a natural burial preserve as the developer has indicated. I think that gets you right to that use. Uh, you wanna make sure that any lighting is subject to what the city has for, uh, dark skies, or, as the developer said, we don't have any lighting. Uh, I'm sure there's gonna be some, so you wanna review that as the SAP. Um, I think the developer, uh, talked about a, a landscaping plan and what kind of landscapes. I think you wanna know exactly what that, what that Berman buffer for the Anken Road people is gonna look like. And, uh, you wanna make sure that that inner bike trail, the pedestrian trail, is gonna be in a dedicated easement. I think that would, that would be some suggestions that, that I came up with, that if you wanted to approve this with conditions or recommend approval to the city council, there are some conditions that you have that would cover all of the issues that I heard tonight, anyway.
And I would add, I would, with a little nuance to what Tom wrote, this is actually the list I was tracking during the meeting as well. So Tom and I, it, it sounds like our lists pretty much the same. Um, what, undertaking testing of ne, neighbor wells, I didn't know how to define that, if you wanted more parameters for that. But what I wanted to say is, if you are, if you do decide you're not comfortable with a recommendation for approval, you still could identify these, that if there were to be a, a, approval, you could still list these as, you know, and obviously, we'll have the minutes of the meeting. So I think, you know, it's appropriate to say, you know, we have, y, y, you know, if, if the members, members have a split boat, although I guess you have five members, you won't have an exactly split boat, but if you want to memorialize these concerns and provide that feedback to the council, it can be, be done without a motion to approve.
Um, and Mark, when will this hit the council's agenda?
Well, I mean, normally, we would just take things to the next meeting, which would be October fifth. I, you know, I mean, there's no reason it can't unless, I mean, I have a lot going on the rest of the week, but I was assuming this is part of my workload, so.
Okay. Well, uh, I, I, I'm gonna say, just hang on one second, I'm gonna say just one, one more thing here, and, and that's this. If, if, and I, and I appreciate Mark's suggestion that if we do, do not make a recommendation, however, we, we in the minutes or however this, uh, should the council, uh, decide this, then here's what we would, uh, here's the conditions we would run on it. Um, but here's what I'm not comfort, not real comfortable with, at eight forty-four PM on Wednesday night is try, if, if, is trying to get that, uh, motion together to approve this with all those conditions. Um, it's just, it's a lot. It, I mean, I, I appreciate the work the staff is doing. Maybe we can do it if, if other members feel comfortable with it. Someone can make a motion and say, put all those on. That's fine. It's just for me, it would be, uh, nice to have a, uh, proposed written motion, but of course, I don't think that, that's not gonna be possible for us to look at tonight. Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm ready. Let's, Tom, did you have something else you were gonna say?
Uh, Tom.
You, you could still make the motion subject to, uh, you know, the issues that were raised by staff and, and ask for the, the minutes, uh, to reflect that, which you would then approve before it goes to council.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I'm sorry, I think it was either Randy or Kurt that was going to.
Yeah, I, I, the only thing I was gonna ask, uh, Mark, appreciate you're putting up the, your, uh, uh, contingencies of approval, and they did overlap quite a bit with what, uh, Tom had, um, had mentioned, but I thought that Tom actually had a few others that were discussed that, um, might, we might wanna add to this, this list here. And, and if, if we're in, if it's an effort to get to a motion tonight, I think that would be helpful if we could, could, uh, make sure that we're all in agreement as to what the, what those contingencies are.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say the same. Sorry, Mark, I, I think Tom's list was more extensive. Tom, do you have those written down?
Tom, actually, I thought was repetitive on a couple. That's why I, I mean, if I'm missing something, Tom, please, please.
Fight path he's meant.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I gave, I gave the reasons why, but then I said, the, the road improvements to Anken Road, including the trail.
Um, what do you mean by road improvements?
Well, the road's gonna have to be improved to what the standards are in the, uh, in the end, MDP. And there's a, there's a road standard in the MDP. And part of that is a trail, so that just needs to be done at some point. Um, and we need to consider that as part of the SAP, those, the exact buffers for the Anken Homes and the rest of the neighborhood, those landscape buffers, we need to know how those are gonna be built and approve them as part of the SAP. Um, you had comments, um, on the proposal that I think should be included, uh, here as well, at least I thought you did. Um, and you may have city staff comments, should be referred to city staff for comments that they might have to on servicing the property.
If you're referring to the comments in the plan, those are engineering, those are the resolution of engineering staff recommendations.
Perfect, that's good.
That, that's, so I know why.
You had something in there about testing wells, but, um, I just wanted the, I had mentioned that they should uh, give us some evidence that groundwater is not, uh, affected, um, by.
And the testing would be at the SAP stage, right?
Yes, exactly.
That's before we record and that's, sorry, before we record an SAP satisfaction of, no degradation of groundwater or sufficient groundwater study. Help me out here, Tom, with the.
Yeah, that's what I had said. I just said some kind of groundwater study or evidence shown that they'll have no ill, ill will, of ill effects on the current wells. That might be easy. It also might take some work, but engineers say they can do anything, so there you go. Uh, stormwater, stormwater plan approved by county land and water resources and the city engineers, again, at the MDP standards. Follow applicable state, county, and, and city rules for these, which I think you have. Um, landscaping plan, um, including the landscaping, uh, uses within the, within the cemetery itself. And you wrote down here, adhere to natural burial best practices, and I thought you should take that even further and say that this is to be restricted to a natural burial preserve, um, with the standards as cited by the developer.
Or, or even more specifically, that the use is a natural barrier preserve and shall adhere to the best practices of the Green Burial Council.
There you go, Green Burial Council. Um, it, that, you know, lighting should comply with, uh, with city codes and be. I didn't think there was gonna be any lighting.
Yeah, no lighting.
But then, then you got that right. But then that, then you got that right, no lighting. Um your signs, nobody talked about signs and monuments. You did a little bit, Kurt, but it seems like any signs. And monuments and any structures should be approved at the S I P standard is at the S I P process as well. And I had one other.
Mark, signs and monuments and artwork. Signs, monuments, sculptures and all structures. Need to be approved at the S I P stage.
Yep, there you go. And then you already had about the bike path being on easement. I think that's what you got.
Yeah, and 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 make make it clear that signs, monuments, sculptures and structures at the S I P, not just placement, but uh design.
Design and placement of the signs, yeah. There you go. How do we do in that time, Ken?
Well, you did, you did really well. Uh you you should, you should have given us uh or somebody should have given us the screen and then we could have had them all written down.
Well, I still want help with this one that I.
Let me, let me, let's go back because I I want to get to this. That and and thank you so much and thanks for everyone that contributed to this. I want to get to this. Um I'm just going to say this for myself. I I'm not against this. Okay, and I think all of the um all of the many. Conditions that have been put on this are make it. Um far better uh of of from a planning and zoning and and so forth perspective. And so, but I I do think that this though it has a very close effect on on some. Westport residents, um it has a much larger and and reverberating effect on um on Middleton. And so, um I don't want to short shrift our residents, but on the other hand, um. Um I I I'm just looking, looking for for someone to give us a motion here. I'm not making a motion. I I'm going to tell you one just just um story that uh. We had the winery that's up on River Road, which I I lost the name of at the moment. Um but we went through two iterations of that and um. Um the the neighbors to that winery were just really, some of them were just so much against it for so many reasons and all of that. And um um I think what's happened is that um they actually uh have like it there. So I only say that as a what uh I can't think of the right word for it, but. This this may be a use, even though it's a cemetery, is maybe a use that. For the for the residents and the people around it may be like, yeah, that's not, that's that's actually a pretty good use for that. It's not a lighted soccer field. Um it's.
There's no road next to your house, right?
Yeah, it it's 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 a quiet, uh it has some um. Um peace peacefulness, um sacredness to it. And um it may be actually turn out to be a good neighbor as I think the winery did when. Uh at one time it was looked at as being a villain. So um that's just my whatever, I forgot the.
I see Dean has his hand up. I'll let him go.
I I, yeah, Ken, I I guess um. I've got a whole bunch of thoughts. I've sat quietly listening to this for two nights now and and I haven't really said how I feel about this and. It's because I don't know how I feel about it still. Um. For some reason, it 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 bothers me because, you know, in the in the cowboy days, you know, people dug holes and put. Put bodies in the ground and made a little pile of rocks with a wooden cross and called it a day. And since then, we've become more, and I'm going to use air quotes, I hardly ever do that civilized. And uh now we've embalmed people and put them in really fancy caskets and put them in sealed concrete boxes. And bury them in the ground and that's supposed to protect the environment, I thought. Um and so now we're going back to saying, well, all that is polluting and we should just. Bury people naturally and uh I I feel like I'm being jerked in two directions, I guess. So having said that, that that's how I feel is is confused, but. It's very clear when we did the uh 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 public hearing that that no one other than the developer. And the developers' people uh spoke in favor of this. And and that really bothers me and certainly our residents, uh the Westport residents. Um have a have a strong feeling about it. And so it makes it really, really hard for me to recommend to. Um to the to the to the city council that that it's okay. When no one in the city of Middleton or in the town of Westport spoke in favor of this other than the developer. Um and we've been spending the evening talking about how we can make a use that nobody wants better. But I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't feel any better about it. I I just don't. And so I don't know how I can vote for this it with good conscience and still I don't really have a problem with it. So I I don't. I am, I am more conflicted on this than I have been in probably twenty years of being on a town board because. It's it's kind of important and I and I don't know what to say. So, but I wanted to throw it out there. I I just don't know how I can vote in favor of this tonight. Um but it is just a recommendation. I just can't recommend to the villa, to the city, I'm sorry. That they should do something that nobody in the city and nobody in the town of Westport has spoken in favor of. So that's just how I feel.
It's persuasive. Randy?
Yeah, uh just a couple of comments. Uh one, uh. Uh and if we could add another contingency in case this does get to a a motion or goes goes for approvals. To to uh to have the property be un- unfenced, um other words, remain public. Um and I would just, you know, in in uh response. Uh to the last comment about, you know, no public support, I I you know. Um Terrence is is correct. You know, the people that are going to be uh vocal at this stage are. Going to be the ones that are going to be opposing it. The people that are that are going to be for it are are really not going to be. Uh that active at this point in time. And in fact, the the people that are going to be using it are. You know, they don't even know they're going to be using it yet. So I I think we have to look uh at the. At the um. At at the comprehensive plan and the master plan and see if if what we're approving here is reasonably consistent with that. And uh give uh, you know, many of the same benefits. Um myself, I can, I can get to that point that I think that this is reasonably consistent with with uh both. Uh the comprehensive plan and the and the master plan. Um and I think if if we're careful with the contingencies. And with the approval of the S I P, I think uh I think everybody will be satisfied with the project in the end.
Can I go? Sorry. Um. So my comments are very similar to Randy's, which is that in the city conference and plan, this is shown as a park. And um. Uh the city has no plans to purchase this anytime as a park. And this uh use with all the contingencies would seem to be close to a park. Um and so, you know, at plan commission, I would have voted in favor of recommending it to city council. Um but I'm also very aware of the fact that this body has always tried to be. Collaborative and and nearly unanimous and kind of work our way to a consensus position. So. Um I think both uh Randy and I, as well as the city council, would be very hesitant. To um. Recommend something that the town is strongly against. And I get the sense that if I made an offer to recommend approval, it would fail two to three. Uh tonight, so that doesn't do anybody any good to kind of throw up a motion and then and then. Um get you on the record. I guess for the town, is there a um. Reasonable path that we could take that would get you to supporting or? Um. I mean, I I understand Dean's ambivalence, right? Because um. That was kind of my first reaction as well. I. I'm not against it, but um. It does seem to be a a significant enough impact for the immediately adjoining neighbors. That we should find a way to um. Consider that. And and I was just understanding by saying it's rare to us that people speak in favor of a development anyway. Um so we approve things all the time that nobody speaks in favor of. Because again, the the potential beneficiaries are diffuse and not ma- may not even live here yet. But I I really don't want to override the town's objections.
Well, Kurt, I mean, e- even though I said what I said, I I. Uh it this is a, this is a city of Middleton deal. I mean, you guys, it's in the city. Um and and I just feels, I feel like I feel and and I I said it before, so I'm not going to say it again. But I don't want that necessarily to be the case. I'm just the first one that came out and said exactly which way it was gonna. I I felt it should go. Um I don't know if if it would, if if I'm a lone wolf here or not, and I don't mind being that. Uh if that's what, if that's what's going to happen, I I I. Doesn't matter to me. I'll, you know, I'll be fine one way or the other. I just uh, I just. Can't in good conscience vote for it, but I don't think we have to be unanimous in everything we do. I I don't, I think maybe that's. Uh a no, it's just unnecessary. So. Vote your feelings on it. I think that's what we need to do in this case.
This is a recommendation, right?
Right.
Who's the final authority on this?
The city council.
The city council.
And that's why I I recommended the approach that I did, which is sensing that there was some. A lack of uni- of unity here, that it is important to lay out all the issues. On the record, I think, so that anybody who does decide to move forward with this can make sure that we have all the concerns that you have addressed.
Um well, and and you know what, Mark? The other thing that could be added to that is to reflect. The the town members here, their concerns is to work with those. Those town residents on Anken Road to try and obtain some support. And that that may be something they they tried today. They just couldn't get them. Um. And with the revised plan and some of these suggestions, you know, Terrence is persuasive. You may reach out to them and convince them that this is really better for them um. Than a school and a road and a and two schools and lighted soccer fields and all that other. Very urban items. This may be better than that, uh but. You know, I I don't know that anybody's here for that right now, uh but that could be an indication. In Mark's idea to send this, it's it's better than the recommendation. Than the plan commission, which didn't include any of these comments. So something to consider was a wise of a wise compromise perhaps. Uh by Mark, if you had that last concern, Dean.
Well, my my, I'm good. Um, yeah, may maybe we should in in fact not really. Make a make a motion or a recommendation, but tell them our pluses and minuses and our potential contingencies. Upon their approval, uh because. We normally look at what the village or what the, I'm so sorry, what the city says and go along with that if we can. At our, at a, at the J Z C level. So um. We didn't have that tonight, so we're we're out, we're out on our own. And uh maybe it's best that that we um we do exactly the same thing, but with a little more um. Meat on the bones here so that the 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 city council has something to go on. I'm okay with that, too.
And Tom, can I ask one more question? My uh, my brain is not processing. When sewer and water are brought up there, will those three town houses that are currently in the town be required to connect?
You know. I keep hitting mute. Uh I think what we did is we talked about as this development proceeds towards those three homes. Um that you you know, the the hope was that they would connect the water and sewer because it's going to be right there. Uh it sure makes a lot of sense. We would hope the developer would work with those three homes to connect them to water and sewer.
Would that be a contingency?
Um, oh, here. Uh might be a little early, Kurt. We weren't really talking about that until the neighborhood around that was going to develop, you know, because the, there's no. Well, there's no lift stations built here yet. You know, the whole water system's not built yet for this. It's just too early.
Okay.
In my opinion, but you could add it as something that, you know, should be considered. When that part of the development comes forward, the developer should work with the homeowners to connect them to sewer and water and alleviate all these water. Fears, right? I mean, that could certainly be mentioned here.
Mark, can we make sure that the minutes reflect that, even if it's not in the motion? And then I don't think we talked about a fifty, the width of the buffer on the western edge. Whether it's fifty feet or not, just a a sufficient buffer.
Switch, what is this meaning?
You're on Terrence.
Terrence, okay, sorry. Can you actually see me or not?
We see some mountain, Mount DuHawk or.
Oh, you see the lighthouse? That's weird. Okay. I don't know why that is. Sorry.
And your hand, we see your hand. But but the light bulb is not on in the in the light.
That's, okay, that is weird. I don't know how. Why, no, I, I've got the switches on, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, now you can see my Peter pre- preface. It's a joke. Um, I don't mind uh as a condition of advancing this. You know, with a positive uh recommendation. That as a condition that we would agree to um pay for. The laterals, you know, once the sewer and the water come along here. That we would agree to pay the laterals off of that sewer and water to connect to the three homes. Um so that once the water and sewer comes here, we would, we would agree to pay for those sewer and water laterals to connect to the three homes. Um and that would alleviate their, you know, all these concerns and. Uh make sure that they get connected at no cost. You know, they might have to some connection fees or something. I don't know, but we'll pay for the sewer and water laterals.
I I I'll tell you this, I I will not vote for, nor will I even abstain from. Which I am considering whatever we do, but uh from anything in in a motion or recommendation. That references the connection of sewer or water to those homes. Um and here's the reason why, that this, that is such a flashpoint. For people who are on um septic and water and like it that way. And maybe have just spent a ton of money putting in a a a pump. We've been through this. We've been through this with our water system. Yeah, I mean, if you want, if you want to piss off those people. The cemetery's not going to piss them off. Tell them they got to hook up the sewer and water is going to really piss them off. So I I won't be in favor of.
Again, you could still uh build the laterals like we've done so that that they're, if they wish to connect, you know, when it happens.
Yeah, I I'm only, I'm only proposing that we provide the sewer and water laterals if they want them. I I have no control over whether they would want to connect or not. That's up to them, you know.
So we just ask, Mark, that the minutes reflect that the developer offered that, uh but not make it part of the motion?
Right. I I wrote that I mean, that Terrence is amenable to adding a condition that they would make available connections to. Sewer and water laterals, to sewer and water um main.
Names, laterals.
If they, if ultimately it's the main, oh, well, right. Okay. He 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 didn't offer to connect, he offered to pay for.
Yeah, I offered to pay for the sewer and water laterals. If they choose to connect.
If, yeah.
I can't force their connection. I can offer to pay for and put in the laterals.
Yeah, I think it's not going to be ready to go to the council anyway on the fifth because I would want to run some of this language by. Um, well, I think Tom and I want to make sure the language is. Um I I don't, we'll see. We'll discuss that here still as part of this tonight.
So would our colleagues in. Uh Westport be amenable to a motion to direct staff? To prepare um a motion. And even a draft rezoning ordinance with all of these conditions and bring it back. To us at the next meeting and to refer to the town board for. Um a recommendation if if you want, refer to the town board, although I think we have a majority of the town board here, right?
No.
Would you want the town board to take a formal vote on a recommendation?
Is the rationale that it's prox-
Is the rationale that it's proximate to town property? Is that what, is that your rationale, Kurt? Yeah, where I suppose.
Oh, Dean, Dean.
I don't need to.
I turned to Dean on that, he's the town chair.
You're muted.
You're muted, Dean. Hey, Dean, you're muted. Can you hear us?
Sorry, but I don't think that that's necessary, guys, uh, because, because I think that try to bring the rest of the board to the level of. Understanding that we've gone through to get to where we are right now is gonna be difficult and and. It may not turn out the way we want it to anyway, for everybody's sake, so I think, I think what we should do is. Is what we were planning here and what what's on the board, and that is to make a motion, I'll make a motion to uh? To to say that the JZC is not unified on the request. Uh, of the developer to uh, change the the GIP, but we recommend that. The uh, potential approval of the GIP, if uh, if done so by the city council, have the following contingencies. And those contingencies, even though. They're, yeah, at a minimum, although they're a little rough tonight, would be uh, the things that are on the board right now. As enhanced and uh, and and cleaned up by staff.
I will second that motion.
Who, that was Kurt, okay.
Uh, just so I understand the motion, is the, is the proposed? Um, language gonna come back to either the? Uh, city plant commission or this, or the joint plant commission for final review, or is this just getting? Forwarded on as is to council?
My motion didn't indicate that it had to come back for our approval, uh, but I'm open to that as a friendly amendment, if that's what you want to do.
I think we'd be fine with, if Tom and Mark uh, clean up the language. I don't know if we need to have the exact wording back before us of all the.
I think, I think the intent's pretty clear. I think we've got that figured out, and I'm fine with with staff finishing it up.
And and Kurt, how how do you feel about uh, sending it back to? Plan commission, city plant plant commission. The only reason I say that is because. Uh? Yeah, I I know we were trying to move things along, and I think we've made a lot of progress today. Um? Uh, it it feels like the plank mission isn't really doing their, their job if they, they don't uh? Get a chance to look at this and and then maybe pass this on to the council.
I'd be fine with that, it just, you know, at some point in time. Um, if we just keep deferring and referring, you know, uh? An an applicant is entitled to some sort of final determination at some point in time. And I know, you know, talking to Terrence, he, he's not gonna spend money on a lot of the studies. Cause that's expensive unless there's some kind of commitment from the city that the use will be allowed. Because otherwise, why do it? Um, and I I guess we can ask Terrence is if there's a. Um, cause usually Terrence does have a specific. Uh, timeframe, he's trying to get a determination on because of needing to put shovel to ground, but. It would seem to me that you're not gonna start preparing this site this year at all, right, Terrence?
Uh, uh, let's see here. Are we good there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the intent would be the spring, uh, but there's a tremendous amount of work to do, and we've gotta, you know, do. You know, after approval of GIP, then we've got to do some studies, we gotta do landscape, there's a lot of plans in Jerry, you know, landscape plans, et cetera. Go back to the S I P process, you know, that's gonna take us to spring. Um, so we're on a good timetable now, but. You you know how it is in win- winters and seasonal construction here, or whatever seasonal work here, so. Um, you know, we're kind of on a comfortable timetable now, but there's really not like room to for long delays, I mean. I'm comfortable with with what you have there. It's fair, it's, you know, it's not perfect, but it's very fair. And we're happy to, you know, we've made lots of changes to try to accommodate the concerns.
So I I would just, I just indicated as a chair that I would not expect this to come back to the. Uh, joint zoning committee. I think we've done tonight our work on this, which has actually been a lot of work. Um, and uh, to put all this together and whether um, the council and. Uh, and the plan commissioner, however, back and forth between the two of them. Want to, whether the council wants to send it back to the plan commission, because now they have all this information or whatever. That that's certainly, there's no objection to that. It's your, it's your business.
I was just gonna suggest that Kurt and Randy, that perhaps. You know, your your communication could be with the mayor or could be with Mark, that when it. Comes to the council next Monday, request that it be submitted back to the plan commission to re- to review this. Uh, that that's just a suggestion. That way, the council gets it and it goes back. I I think um?
Well, my my, what else mentioned to the city administrator tomorrow is I think we don't even take it to the council, because there's still committee work to be done. And essentially what the town, what the joint zoning committee is saying tonight is, is. We've given you our comments, and now we want the plan commission to finalize this list of conditions, so. Essentially, it's as if the motion last night to defer consideration until Westport has provided input. You know, that's essentially the the effect of what's happening. Uh, but I want to check on that with for for procedural reasons to see what's in order, because there was a motion adopted by plan commission to send it to council. So, but now we have another body that says we want the plan commission to look at it again. I I'll I'll figure that out. We'll we'll figure that out. Um, and all with the understanding that. You know, obviously, we want to do a thorough review. But at some point in time, we don't want to just. Gum up multiple committees with multiple meetings on the same topic.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that with this one. Yeah, so uh, okay, so I think we've had our discussion on that. Does anyone else, so we we have the motion. Um, and uh, that that motion is true. Uh, somebody, okay, restate, restate the premise of the motion.
Dean, I made the.
Conditions, but the prep, what the, what the motion is doing.
Dean, I took a little license with what you said to to the motions to state that although the joint zoning committee is not unified on the developers' request to amend the GIP. They recommend that potential approval of the GIP amendment have at a minimum the following contingencies to be reviewed by the city plan commission. Prior to action by the common council. Is that?
Well, I would say that if the GIP amendment is approved, then. These would be the um, you know, because this kind of, you know what I'm saying, it's a little bit different than what I.
To recommend that, I recommend that. If the GIP is approved, if the amendment is approved. If they are inclined to approve the GIP, they attach these conditions, no?
Or or should it be approved? Yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
Yes.
That's the intent.
Not my dog, by the way. It's my, it's my neighbor's dog. I have the window open, so.
I'm I'm on the eighth floor of my office downtown. I doubt that I'm hearing a dog.
You still downtown, Ken?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Oh, boy.
So, uh, uh, are we good? Mark, you want to read that one more time?
I think it was cleaner the way I had it, but I under- entirely.
But you can still work on it. You can still work on it some more, but you know what I mean, and Tom does too.
Yeah, I. I I think what, I think what Dean said, it's, it should it be approved? Uh, that these would be the conditions that would be recommended.
Right.
And I don't think that there's anything wrong with the minutes, or the minute should reflect.
Well, Lord, Lord, by the way, do I say that that the city plan commission has to look at it? I don't care if they do or they don't, that's.
Well, that's, that's, okay, I want to know if that was, I mean. Somebody, I think Randy, Randy Bruce, I think, has said that, that he wanted to.
I I had just asked the question as to whether uh, whether Kurt thought it be appropriate. I had indicated I thought it would.
If it, if we.
Seems to me that.
Let me, let me finish here. If we're not, if we're not going to uh, send it back to 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 plan question. I'd at least like to keep the plan commission members informed, so that uh, that if they would like to. You know, speak at the, at the council meeting or or represent their thoughts at the council meeting, they could do so. I just want to keep, I don't want to cut anybody out of the discussion process.
No, Randy, that's fine. I I I just mean that, you know, market was a little bit concerned about. The process and all of that stuff.
Yep.
We don't need to see it again. We don't mind how the city wheels. Uh, you know, mesh here, so that's, that's up to you guys, however you want to do it, and and we certainly don't mean to cut them out. It's just that our, our job tonight was to make a a a statement and a recommendation to the, to the council, and that's what we did.
And and Randy's right, that with this many changes and and contingencies, it should go be before the plan commission, because you don't want. Twenty different contingencies negotiated at common council, or the meeting will go till three in the morning. And so that's what plan commission is for, so. Recommend back to uh? Reviewed, but yeah, plan commission. And then we can work internally to ask staff to put it on a ge- in an agenda, because I think any commission member can ask. An item be on an agenda, right, Mark?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Without having to have it be re-referred to city council or by city council. Okay, let's land this plane here.
Okay.
We know that staff will uh, wordsmith that motion.
Yeah.
Clean it up.
Yeah, just clean, clean up the, clean it up a little bit, but I think that what we've got here is our motion and uh? Thank you, Mark, for putting it up there. So is there any, any further discussion on the motion? If there's, if there's not, then.
Cynthia is muted.
What's that? Oh, Cynthia, you're muted. Cynthia.
I know, trying to find that. I was just reading one last time as it got changed again before I. About the giant.
What?
I just, I just wanted to review it as it got changed again, and it it got scrolled up, so I couldn't see the whole thing. Thank you.
You're ready, Ken.
Okay, you're all right. Okay, good. If we're all ready, then um, uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, oppose, say nay.
Aye.
Uh, or I, uh, Dean, you are, no?
No, I'm 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 okay.
Oh, okay, sorry. Who's your motion?
He made the motion.
You can vote against your own motion if you want. Uh, and Cynthia, were you up? Okay, all right, looks like, looks like we have a unanimous uh, approval of the motion, as Mark has already noted at five zero. Uh, and again, um, I thank you all, I thank you, Terrence, Madeline, I think everyone that has joined us tonight. It's not uh, that, as I think Dean put this, um, it's a, it's a very difficult question, because. We all, we're dealing with life and death, um, and nobody likes to talk about death, so um? Uh, but the, but the work that was done, I think, is the work that was asked uh, for us to do. And so, um, though we did not say yes or no, we did not say no. Uh, and uh, I thank everyone for for doing that as I babble on. Anything else?
Other words.
What's that?
You didn't reach a dead end.
We did not reach a dead end, nor did we defer it. No, do are we going to at this level have another hearing or collect more information? Everyone can go to the plan committee on the council meeting. Um, and they should, and they have a right to.
The week, we get another meeting with it, though, the plan commission, so.
Yes, yes.
There'll be a couple more hours, I'm sure.
All right, well, it's uh, uh, nine twenty-four, not too bad, so I thank you all again, and if there's nothing else tonight, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
There is one more thing.
Wow, geez.
There is, thank you, thank you.
I think Mark wanted to talk about scheduling another.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 I, there.
Because we, we do have a couple of things coming up. We got community Bishop's Bay Phase six is coming up and. You know, timing is kind of important.
Okay, well, just let's just do that, let's just do this scheduling then. I'm sorry, I knew that there was something, I wasn't looking at an agenda.
But that's what it's about, Ken. It's about.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, so what, what?
Mark, very selfishly, the reason I'm suggesting having a meeting in early November is. Because it would combine your regularly scheduled meetings for end of Nov- uh, October, end of November, end of November, obviously, is Thanksgiving. Uh, I'm gonna be on vacation mid-October, so it's hard for me to prepare for a meeting for in late October, so I'm suggesting a meeting. Uh, November either, well, the tenth is what I would suggest, if you want to stick with Wednesday.
Uh, I've got something on my calendar for Wednesday night already.
Uh, November seventeenth would be an option, which would be mid-November, obviously.
Uh, that I can do.
Is that too long to wait? Um, actually, Terrence is probably still on the line. Is that too long to wait for phase six?
Wait, I didn't catch all that back and forth.
So we're looking at the next meeting being November seventeenth.
Number seventeen, okay. Me.
And that would be phase six.
For for plan commission or council?
For this body.
Oh, for phase six, sorry.
So we kind of tentatively would have the flat hearing on the calendar. On November eighth before the town plan commission. That's how we did it last time, but the joint zoning committee also made a recommendation. And then, you know, the, if the plan commission is like, as, I'm I'm telling you, it is consistent with the, with what we approved before. It would seem to me that we probably could have the town board uh, make its approval the following week. But we'd like to have the joint zoning committee weigh in, because of course, it's an S I P, which is a zoning thing. Um, and the city council acts on S I Ps, right, Mark?
Well, yes, yes.
And so does the plan commission.
So does the plan commission.
So do we want this body to review it before or after the Middleton plan?
Well, we usually have you uh, look at after.
Okay, good.
Um, so. We, I think we had in the schedule October twenty-seventh. Taylor, is that right? Not?
Yeah, but we just said we can't do that. Well.
Can you do the third?
It just means I'm gonna have to be super organized two weeks before the meeting, like, get the agenda posted, so.
Okay, because. Yeah, I apologize. It's just the winter issue here, and you know, in this climate, and we're trying to work around that, so.
Well, the third is actually better than.
Third works.
The tenth or the seventeenth, to tell you the truth. For me, I don't know about everybody else.
Okay, November third for what item, though?
It'd be joint zoning committee on phase six of the community of Bishop's Bay, Platt, and S I P. That specific enough for you?
Yes.
Okay, we got that set?
Tom, are you, and you're willing, you could staff it that night if you needed to?
Yeah, certainly, because I have an MPO board meeting that night. What, what time does that start?
Six thirty.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm fine. If you're fine, would let me, or Abby can hang out too, you know, or whoever.
We'll see what's on that meeting. I happen to be chair of that body, so that's why I was trying.
Yeah, that's right, and that's important, because you're gonna be talking about plans and spending money in the town of Westport, I hope.
Six o'clock, six o'clock on the third.
Oh, you're so wonderful, Ken. That work for everybody?
Yeah.
Dean, yeah.
Any other, any other calendar work we need to do? Hearing none, now I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn. I can't wait. I just can't wait.
I'll second.
If you may, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. All right, we're getting there. Thank you.
You're welcome to come watch the plan commission when we do this again.
Can't wait.